We'll call this meeting to order.
Please rise. Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. At this time, Judge Hunter is going to lead our invocation. Thank you, Judge Hunter, for taking stepping in for us.
Yes, sir. Let's all bow our heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we come again to you with great thanks for this amazing body, the county you have allowed us to live in. Help us to realize and be mindful that we are here only because you allowed us to be here. All the elected officials in this room, all the appointed officials, we are here because you allowed us to be. There is no greater calling than to know that we are in a place doing the work that you have commissioned us to do. It is a great obligation, great...it's a great thing that you have put on us, give us the strength and the will and the courage to seek your guidance and to acknowledge you in all that we do. And in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
All right, let's check our roll.
Roll calls now open. Each commissioner, please record your presence.
I thought I hit it. All right, thank you, Mr. Kemp. Your regular agenda and consent agenda are there. I'll wait for a motion to approve. Motion made by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner Rhodes. All in favor, say aye. Oh, hang on, hang on, hang on. Mr. Mansfield.
I do have something that I would like to move to add to the agenda tonight. And again, the reason I want to do this is because it's something the citizens have asked me to multiple occasions and something I was just looking for satisfaction for them for an up or down vote and a chance. The citizens understand it's about a greenway resolution that they have asked that I present and bring forth. And I really would love for them to have at least a fair chance of having an up and down vote on this. But basically, what this resolution does is just states that we will not seek to condemn private property on Upper Station Camp from Long Hollow to Cotton Town or 25. It's nothing about Greenways and Indian Lake or Mansters Farm or Westmoreland or anywhere like that. It's strictly talking about declaring that we will not seek to condemn folks' private property who are not looking to sell or give up their property on Upper Station Camp because of the sewer coming in. And they just don't believe what we've said. I understand that this would not be binding, but it's more of a good faith effort if we're saying what we did back in June was actually in good faith. And I don't think we'd have a problem telling these citizens that, hey, we're willing to say that we're not going to steal your private property to put in a greenway even if there is a sewer easement on top of it. So that's my motion to add that to the agenda.
All right, so motion to add to the agenda, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. Commissioner Baker Ring, you're in the queue.
Thank you, sir. This was brought before legislative committee, and it was not passed in legislative, so I object to adding this to the agenda. It's already been heard, and we don't need to hear this again, I don't believe. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gueh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would echo what my fellow commissioner, Commissioner Ring, just said verbatim and add to it that it was pointed out in committee that the commission has actually already said and agreed to what it says. The other thing I would point out to the commissioners that couldn't make the last joint meeting last week is that our law director, no resolution, to my knowledge and history, has gone through and passed. It's not gone through our law director's hands. She had no writing with it, had nothing to do with it. It's written by the maker of the motion, and she also had reservations on the verbiage of it may be causing more trouble for the whole county. I agree with Mr. Ring. No need to add it to the agenda.
Okay. Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Well, I've been to just about probably every meeting where this has been brought up and talked about, been the second here more than one time. I understand the comments that were made. But here's a way we take care of this right now. We can fix it right now. End it right now. Vote to add it to the agenda. Vote it up or down. That ends it. Vote to add it to the agenda. Vote it yes or vote it no. That, I mean, that pretty much ends it. I mean, if there's something to do with the verbiage, might be able to change some of the verbiage. But vote to add it to the agenda, get done with it, move on.
Mr. Tinsley.
Mr. Chairman, I don't feel comfortable voting on something where I don't have a copy of the resolution in front of me. So I'm going to say that we let this go back through legislative. That way, we can get some sort of a copy in front of us at this time.
I actually have 24 copies that we could pass out tonight if you put it on the agenda. Okay.
Mr. Hyatt.
Chairman, maybe something has changed. I'm not aware of it. I was thinking that anything that had been discussed by a committee could, on the floor here, be added to the agenda. Is that not part of our rule?
I think that's what they're trying to be, Mr. Hyatt, is add it to the agenda.
Well, I mean, I thought it was just automatic that a commissioner could add it to the...we've always done that in the past.
Fails in...my understanding is when it fails in committee.
But even if it fails, if the commissioner request...and I don't know, has that changed, Law Director?
We've always added. We've always had to add the law.
Yes.
Get it added by vote, Mr. Hyatt. That's what the law director said.
Okay.
All right, well, while we're just getting the copies, there's no one else in the queue. So let me explain what the process is. A yes vote is to add the resolution to the agenda. A no vote is to not add it to the agenda. Waiting on the copies.
Mr. Chairman, this is probably a question for the law director or yourself for a ruling. If it's okay with the maker of the motion, since it's probably, I guess, it's going to take a few minutes for her to go make all the copies. If it's okay with the maker and you, Mr. Chairman, could we do the...if there's no objections, could we do three and four to recognize the folks that are in our audience and come back?
Mr. Mansfield, are you okay with that while we're getting the copies? We'll go ahead and do our subjective recognition? Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gueh. All right, Mr. Holland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's always exciting when we're having 90-degree weather, week after week after week. I've got a resolution declaring September through January 31st as Holiday Fest in Sumner County. So we're going to get in the mood of the Christmas spirit tonight. Whereas holiday season brings joy and hope to all of us as we all give thanks for the many blessings that have been bestowed upon us. Holiday Fest, which begins on September 1st and lasts through January 31st, brings together children and adults alike to experience the magic of the season amidst scores of decorated Christmas trees and thousands of dazzling holiday lights. And yes, come up. You've got to make me look good. And whereas, established in 2007, Holiday Fest has become a Sumner County tradition which honors creativity, charity, volunteerism, and community pride, and welcomes everyone to share in music, food, dancing, as well as outstanding arts and crafts which make our county so unique. Get a little closer. And whereas Holiday Fest is a family-friendly seasonal event which offers opportunities to create lasting memories with the annual Christmas tree lighting, Festival of Lights, Breakfast with Santa, Appalachia Christmas storytelling, Boat Parade, boy, it's a lot of stuff, St. Nicholas Ball, Holiday Fashion Show, Christmas Tree Elegance, and the Christmas parades where holiday cheer is spread throughout the area. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting on the regular session on the 16th day of September 2019, that this body does declare that this year's Holiday Fest has begun on September 1st and will continue through January 31st, and encourages all citizens to participate in these special events to celebrate this extraordinary holiday experience. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body and the clerk, which is Bill Kemp, is to furnish a copy of this resolution to my friend, Ms. Linda Ebgen, on behalf of Holiday Fest.
And as always, Linda, you make me look good. Do you have anything to say?
I do. Just a short little thing. I want to tell you that this year Hendersonville celebrates its 50th anniversary. Our parade this year will celebrate that. And our royal court, we always have a king and queen, but we also have a royal court. And this year, the royal court will be people that have been married 50 years. And Mr. and Ms. Sprouse have been married 50 years, so they'll ride in the parade this year. I hope that all of you will attend all the events. It helps our charities. We've gotten more and more and more charities here, and they need more and more. So your ticket buying and your support is really important. And thank you again for everything. Thank you, Larry Phillips, our president, and come out and see us, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm not going to make that mistake twice. Come on up, Judge Hunter and your crew, before I get in trouble again. On a more serious note, tonight, we have a resolution recognizing September as National Recovery Month. Whereas National Recovery Month, sponsored by Substance Abuse and Mental Services Administration, is a national observance helped every September to celebrate the gains made by those in recovery, the importance of a strong and supportive community, and the dedication of our service providers across the nation. And whereas, in 2019, Recovery Month theme is "Join the Voices for Recovery: Together We Are Stronger," highlights the need to share resources and build networks across the county, across the country, to support the many paths to recovery since mental and substance abuse disorders affect all of us. And that is so true. And whereas, National Recovery Month presents the opportunity to educate the community on issues related to mental health, substance abuse, and promotes the benefits of prevention and treatment, and celebrates health improvements and achievements made by individuals in recovery. Therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting on the regular session on this 16th day of September 2019, that this body hereby recognizes and celebrates National Recovery Month and encourages all community members to participate in activities that promote the benefits of prevention, treatment, and recovery, and honors the contributions of our dedicated service providers. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution, Ms. Tracy Bryant, on behalf of the Recovery Court of Sumner County. Now, Judge?
Yes.
Tracy, I know that you have something to say. Hang on, I got to get the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Well, I want to say thank you for doing this and honoring this month for the people who are in recovery and noticing what we're doing. And I really, really appreciate that. You all are always there for us and...
Tell them about Recovery Fest.
Recovery Fest that we just had last weekend, Sunday before last. I don't know if any of you were able to make that, but it was a huge success. Over 300 people were there, and it was great. We had vendors, and we had lots of things set up for the kids. We had music. It was wonderful. If you weren't there, maybe you can come next year because we're going to start doing that every year. So...
Now, my very own grant writer, she's a strong supporter of your organization. Tell them how many people's lives have been changed by Recovery Court. Judge, somebody.
See, we have had...well, I didn't bring any statistics, but we've got...
How many graduations?
We've had about 35 graduations, and we have, we average anywhere about 10 per graduation. That's two a year, so...
10 to 20.
10 to 20. We have the DUI court that has graduates. We have a mental health court that's had one graduation, and they're coming up for their next graduation. So we are saving lives. And as you hear on the news every day about the opioid crisis, we are fighting that here in Sumner County. So I just want everybody to know that we are being very successful with that. And Judge Hunter, would you like to say something?
This is Kit Senyard. She's the director of the Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition. She partners with our Recovery Court. They are tremendously helpful for us. She was one of the sponsors of the Recovery Fest that took place last weekend. They do a lot of presentations in schools with young adults under 18 to kind of spread the word to them and their parents in the community at large about the dangers of using illegal drugs and even prescription medication. It's a huge problem. Everyone knows that. You know, the real issue is how do we solve it? How do we keep people off drugs? Kit and her group are really helpful for us in our program, and they do so many other things outside of what Recovery Court does. This is Eric Malden, Eric, Assistant Attorney General. He's a gatekeeper of our Recovery Court. He determines really who can come in and who can't. He has to screen them, make sure they meet the qualifications, and Eric does a great job. He recently took that over for Recovery Court and the DUI court program as well. So Eric's got his hands full doing that and the mental health court, too. Didn't realize he had that. He's got that, too. So he's pretty busy doing all those things. We have a lot to be proud of in our Recovery Court program here in Sumner County. We were in that first group of recovery courts that were certified by the state of Tennessee. And how long ago was that? 10 years?
Oh, it's been longer than that. 2005.
Okay, somewhere around 2005, and we have been certified every year since then. We get high marks on all the audits. That's thanks to Tracy, John Merriman, who is not here. He's on staff. He does a lot of the technical stuff with the computers and the filings that the state requires. So we have a lot to be proud of with the Recovery Court that we have here in Sumner County.
I'd like to also thank our sheriff's department, our DA's office, law enforcement, the city. Everybody is very supportive and very helpful, and we couldn't do it without everybody's support.
And we thank this group for recognizing Tracy and the program and all the staff. It's a joint effort. Tracy's at the top of this. Without Tracy, this would not happen. But she's at the top of the heap, and it's one big, huge effort. I mean, we have a staffing tonight. People that came to the staffing, probably 12 to 15.
Right, we have a staff of people that meet on Monday night.
Right. And they're not paid staff, all of them. Some are volunteers, some, like Kit, came. You know, we don't pay her. We don't pay Eric to do what he does. We don't pay Commonwealth to come and be part of this program. They just come and do it. And they're part of our staff, and it is one big effort.
We'd love for you all to come.
Graduation is...
November the...
Yeah, y'all are meeting that night. It's on a Monday night, so we're going to have to change that so y'all can come. Yeah.
Bring them here, and they can graduate here.
Well, we can do that.
Oh, we should do that. How about that?
Maybe more productive than what we do sometimes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you again.
Yeah, along those lines, just the law director shared with me, I don't know if you get the seat. He has emails or the county commission emails, but Purdue Pharma declared bankruptcy. Of course, you know, they were the big purveyors of opioids, and so we'll wait and see how that shakes out. But, you know, they, you know, were a multi-billion dollar company that profited heavily off this. And if you remember a couple of years ago when we first started talking about the lawsuit, it was what, a routine dental exam turned into about a $50,000 cost because of the effects of the opioids on the person and just the havoc that it's wrought. So the work that they're doing to try to address that issue is huge, and we're very thankful for them. All right, let's go back to our motion to add Mr. Mansfield's resolution onto the agenda. Everyone's had it, had a chance to read it. I seen...Mr. Hinton.
The...putting a resolution or a motion before this body, listing things that we're not going to do, we need to each take about a week, and we can bring 500 of these in here if you want to, things we're not going to do. I don't know how you pre-legislate things that you're not going to do. I might want to add an amendment that we won't paint the sheriff car pink. I don't know where you stop this at. I mean, I don't know where this finally runs to an end if we start legislating what we're not going to do. I don't know how you'll wrap that up, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how you'll put that in a shell when somebody asks the question, what are you not going to do? Well, we have 1,875 resolutions, and you can take them, read them. I don't know where you go with this. I don't know how you can do this in the confines of parliamentary procedure. We have voted on this issue. This issue's already been addressed, and we voted that we were not going to do a greenway. That was pulled out of a piece of legislation that we had before us. We addressed that. We pulled it out and said, we're going to do the rest of it, but we're not going to do that. That issue is settled. If we pass this one, and two months from now we bring the same issue back up, we can change our minds and decide to do it anyway. We're not...and it's been told several times, we're not going to obligate upcoming commissions on what they've got to do and what they can't do. We don't have the ability to do that. So I think it's kind of a strange precedent that we're going to set if we start voting on and trying to list things that we're not going to do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Mr. Tinsley?
I want to...Mr. Chairman, I want to echo Mr. Hinton's comments. My question to this, and I asked the law director, is at what point do we stop? And this is kind of a Pandora's box of we're going to pass a resolution this month, but we're not going to do this. And next month, I'm going to bring a resolution saying that we're not going to make the sheriff wear pink. And to me, this is...this issue, we settled this issue. We've moved on from this issue. And I don't understand how we are binding not only the future commissions, but future homeowners along here that might want a greenway in 30 or 40 years on their property, how we're going to pass a resolution now to bind them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger.
I just have a question. Right now, we're just voting whether or not to add it to the agenda, correct?
That's correct.
We're not voting on the actual debate of the resolution.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly.
That's correct. Mr. Mansfield?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the only reason that citizens have asked me to bring this forth is pretty simple, because we're currently in the middle of condemning their land for a sewer that this legislative body told citizens that we had already condemned it for a greenway when we never did. That was factually wrong and incorrect. Shared that in our June meeting. And the county mayor has said he does not plan on pursuing a greenway at this time in, I believe, our July meeting. So the intent is, that says that is the intent to do it in the future. And for these citizens, it's just a good faith effort. I understand it's not binding. People like to say if things are binding, not binding. Or, you know, that we don't have a resolution for recording these meetings in this chamber, but we're going to have a non-binding resolution for a recording committee meeting. So it's like, we can argue this back and forth. I think it's a silly argument, in my personal opinion. But sure, you can come back and change this next month if you want to. You can raise taxes next month if you want to as well. I mean, so there's a lot of things we can and can't do, but this is just a fact of these homeowners have explicitly said and been up here time and time again saying they do not want this to happen in their backyards. And this is not about somebody who might want to do it. This is not talking about that. This is talking about people who don't want to do it. And so it's really that simple. You can change the language, do it if you want to with it. I'm just asking for an up or down vote for these citizens, because it's been expressly said that not at this time, the county mayor said is his intentions, he would build a greenway in their backyards today if he could. And they're not happy about that. I'm just sorry, but they're not happy about that. And so they just want a good faith, saying, hey, this is not our intent as this county commission. What the next one does in four years is kind of all they can do. So it's just, that's the only reason why I have asked for this. So respectfully, I disagree with some of the comments made tonight, and just asking for an up or down vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Mr. Foster?
I call for the question, Mr. Chairman.
You're the last one. We're good to go. All right, so we need 16 votes to add this to the agenda. A yes vote is to add it to the agenda. A no vote is to not add it to the agenda.
The amendment's on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With 11 affirmative votes, the amendment to the agenda fails to carry.
All right. All in favor, I see no one else in the queue, all in favor approving our agenda and consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Let's see. Our approval of the minutes, the minutes are in your packet. I'll wait for a motion to approve the minutes. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Tinsley. Mr. Comenden?
Okay. Page 146, the last paragraph, there was a word left out. It says, "or seconded and should the word 'not' have had the floor first." And then also, the word "the floor first" is in there twice. But the main thing is the word "not."
Okay. Okay. All right, we can fix that. Mr. Mansfield?
I just had two points of information for clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
One was for the law director. Citizens have asked me, since we're talking about sewer condemnations, they wanted to just explain how, for the record, if you wouldn't mind, how White House utility, as a private utility company, what statute that they're using to condemn...
That doesn't have anything to do with the minutes from last month. We're on the minutes, Mr. Mansfield, not on White House Utility District. There was nothing on last month's agenda dealing with Greenways or White House Utility District condemnations.
Well, how about a point of personal privilege, then?
Not during...we got a motion on the floor about minutes. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. All right, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Do we have anyone that signed up to speak tonight? Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Your veterans, your veteran service report is on your desk, is it?
It's attached.
Is it?
It's attached to the packet.
Yes.
Yep.
As it says, as it says in parentheses, Ms. Kruger, it's there. Okay. All right, at this time, I'm going to, I'm gonna turn things over to Mr. Kemp as we do our election of chairman and chairman pro tem. Oh, wait, hang on one second, Mr. Kemp, let me make, Mr. Comenden wanted me to recognize him to make an announcement.
One little thing about these keychains, I visit the TCAT in Portland quite often and the last time I was there, the machine shop got a new machine, a new CNC router. Monty Nelson is the instructor there and he was showing me these and I said, gee, I wish you would make all the commissioners one of those and put their name on it. So, he did. Has nothing to do with tonight except, you know, not a timing thing, so he just got them made and emailed me and said they were done and I went and picked them up. And I think the TCAT in Portland is a great addition to Summer County.
Yes, sir. Do you like the-
They have well over 100 students enrolled right now.
Do you like the upstairs, Mr. Comenden? It looks good, doesn't it?
I sure do.
Yeah, looks good. If you get a chance, if you have not had a chance to go to TCAT in Portland, it's really an amazing, amazing program, it's really doing great things for, for our counties. If you get a chance, drop by and enjoy your, our keychains. Mr. Kemp.
All right, the floor is open for nominations for chairman. Commissioner Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry.
Mr. Kemp, and thank you for the recognition. Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, I rise tonight with, to proudly, proudly renominate and put back in to repeat his term as chairman, Mr. Scott Langford. And I can't, in the amount of years I've been here, and I know many, many, many on this side of the stage here, if you will, have felt the same way from the comments they've made, as well as citizens. And I put Mr. Scott Langford to stay as chairman to the commission, Mr. Kemp. So move.
We have the name of Langford entered. Commissioner Kruger.
Do we second that?
Okay. Uh, Langford, Commissioner Graves, would you like to nominate?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Jerry Becker.
Okay, we have. All right, we have two names placed into nomination. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Is there a motion that nominations cease?
No motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Foster, a second by Kruger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will have an election. We have two names on the slate. We have Langford and we have Becker. We will use the board to vote. Let me get that done, this is doing two things at once. All right, we will use your green and yellow button. Your green button, place in the order that they were nominated, Langford will be the green button, which is your first button. Becker will be the yellow button, which is the second button. Any questions about which button? So, Langford is the green button, once it's open, Becker is the yellow button. All right, the vote for chairman is now open. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, all 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 17 votes in favor, Langford is elected your chairman. I will turn the meeting gladly back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Do we have any nominations for pro tem? Mr. Whit.
I would like to nominate Jerry Becker as our chairman pro tem.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Jerry Becker for pro tem. Ms. Kruger.
Baker Ring, please.
Okay. Baker Ring.
Move nomination to cease, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, motion's, uh, motion's been made and seconded to cease nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. So, I assume we'll use the same, the same path, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Becker will be the green and Mr. Ring will be red, excuse me, yellow. So, let me restate that. Mr. Becker will be green, Mr. Ring will be yellow.
All right, are you ready, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
The vote is open. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With 14 votes, Becker is elected chairman pro tem.
Okay. All right, congratulations, Mr. Becker. All right, let's see, approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Kruger, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your written reports are on your desk. Notaries, is there a motion to approve our notaries?
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Echols.
We don't have any of your speechless. Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
It was actually Mr. Graves.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm not hearing so well tonight, Mr. Graves.
All right, notary applications on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 23 affirmative votes, notaries are elected.
Okay, we'll go to our standing committees. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, first notification to the commission, full commission, committee on committees, as planned, had our chairman elections tonight in our, our standing committee. Thank you very much and appreciative to mention that I was unanimously chosen to remain in that position and of course, that committee has been voted on in, within quite some time. Mr. Chairman, everyone has on their desk the same process that we have gone through since 2015. I'll remind, some of this is gonna be old news to some of you, so I apologize for that, just a reminder for some others. This is the process that really Madam La Marb, a former commissioner, spearheaded when we, around 2015, changed it to where we kind of asked the opinions of people based on everything in their life, based on their, what they wanted to serve on, what they liked to serve on, what their profession kind of made them lean towards, as well as their schedules. There is no way, and every time, to, as an additional reminder, we have always, since then, put together a slate. Since then, it's been unanimous out of committee on committees, simply for the fact that nothing is 100% all the time, but literally 95 to 100% of the time, everyone gets the majority of what they're asking for, if not their choices. Again, there's no way it can ever be 100% and never will. So, the slate has been presented to you, that is on your desk that you've all had, that was unanimous and that was debated in committee on committees tonight and was unanimous to send us to the commission. Mr. Chairman, and I so move as submitted.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Echols. Mr. Hyde.
Mr. Chairman, because of my schedule, I need to be taken off the highway commission and that will leave me on the emergency services. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I should've mentioned this beforehand, I apologize to the committee. The other thing, and, and committee on committee will take Mr. Hyde's recommendation and will deal with it the following month, as we've always mentioned for the last few years is, if you end up on a committee, and I apologize, Mr. Hyde, I didn't say that in advance, if you end up on a committee that you have a conflict with or just simply don't wanna serve on, in a perfect world, find someone else on another committee that might switch with you, but also either let committee on committees, myself as chair, or Madam Law Director know and we will bring that up again the following month.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Goode. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if you recall back, I think two months ago in legislative, I had a resolution brought forward to your, to that committee addressing the overflow of the committee meetings and you assured me that you would address that.
Mr. Chairman.
Tonight.
Yeah, hang on, Ms. Kruger, go ahead. About the time of when they would meet?
Yes, sir. Yeah, for the overlap and, and I haven't-
Yeah.
Another-
Mr. Chairman, I can add something too.
All right, hang on, let me finish, let me finish and we'll come to you, Ms. Kruger. Go ahead.
So, that, that was something that was brought to me by the, the citizens because you can't be in two places at one time. And also, I can't serve on the emergency services committee and that was nowhere near one of my three choices. And I thought we, we used to be able, like he said, pick somebody that was willing to replace you and I spoke to my counterpart in the first district, be more, be more than willing to replace me on the emergency services committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll, as mentioned in prayer, we'll obviously take that into consideration, deal with it next month. And I apologize to Commissioner Taylor for not saying this as well. I guess I got so excited, I forgot the two other added announcements. But we will take that up next month. We did discuss, and the law director and I discussed the fact that it was brought up that do we need in the joint meeting last month to alter the amount of time that our meetings, committees met? Do we need to add, do we need to subtract some? And we mentioned that each chairman, because there will be new chairmen starting in October in every committee, we mentioned that every committee would bring that up on their agenda to decide what is best served for that committee.
And I, and I think since we have everyone here, I think one thing I would like for us to try to handle is, let's not set committee meetings like where one starts at 5:30 and one starts at 6:00. Let's try to at least build an hour in and then let's just communicate with each other. If we know, like for instance, if it's general ops and we're doing something courthouse-related that it's gonna go longer than an hour, let's communicate with the other committees and let's build a little more time in just for that. I, I think we can, I'd like, Commissioner Taylor, I hear what you're saying, I would like for us to try to manage that ourselves. I think we've done a pretty good job of that over the years and now that we've got this year, you know, some of the ideas that we've had, I think we can, we can probably hit some of that. And then if we don't, then I see, I would recommend you bring your proposal back up. Mr. Mansfield.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just along with that, I remember when this was discussed, but there's an option to consider. I, I think Mr. Allen had presented an option, if you did wanna keep it 30 minutes apart, for example, if a lot of times the meetings didn't go over.
Yeah.
But if they did, knowing that the second meeting just wouldn't start until that first one ended, and kind of a policy, so just as a consideration, if you did wanna keep it closer, so I just-
Yeah, I, I would hope that our chairman could talk, chairpersons could talk to each other, so if you know you got a big agenda, you could communicate and say, let's wait, you know, let's start at 7:30 instead of 7:00 or something like that, give an hour and a half instead of an hour. But I think if we avoid the 30, it seems to me over this year, the ones that have caused the most trouble are when we have one that starts at 5:00 and one that starts at 5:30 or 5:30 and 6:00. And I think we can probably police that, clean, clean that up on our own. We can try it that way and if we need to do something else, we can come back certainly. All right, motion's been made and properly seconded for our committee structure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Anyone decide, I heard Commissioner Mo Taylor vote no, anyone else vote no? Okay. Motion passes 23 to 1. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, continuing with committee on committees, as you can see from your agenda, Mr. Lanham, City of Galatin, has still yet to make their formal recommendation, so that has been deferred. Airport authority, Mary Jane Isham's term has expired, the county executive has recommended Don Abbott to make that replacement. It was discussed in committee on committees and unanimous and I so move.
All right, Ms. Kruger, I hate to interrupt you, but we need to elect the chairman and vice chairman of each committee.
You want to do it before the committees, rest of this, or finish it?
Let's go ahead and do it right now. Is that okay?
Which one? I don't care.
Let's go ahead and do it, let's go ahead and elect our chairpersons, vice chair right now.
Okay.
While we, while we get it up. Okay, one thing that we discussed doing this year is, in the past, in, in terms of speed, we've tried to do like three or four committees at once and people couldn't be multiple places at the same time. So, what we're gonna do this year is go one committee at a time instead of trying to do three or four at once and being spread out and trying to wait on people. So, let's start with general ops. I have Michelle, Mr. Hinton, Ms. Tucker, Mr. Rhodes, Ms. Kruger, Mr. Ring, Ms. Guthrie, if y'all would like to meet right out here. We'll stand in recess.
I just need to copy the ones, see, general ops, budget, education, financial management.
How are we doing this? Emergency.
Is this a live mic?
It is. You can't even, I mean, you're on, you're on the internet.
Yo.
Beer board. Okay, you can have it, Leah.
We're, we're over here, out of the-
Oh, sorry.
Trying to figure things out, we're doing this.
This is the one with the chair.
Second.
I don't know if I can tell if I'm like, I've, I've, nomination's closed, I say chair.
I don't know if I can.
And Gene Rhodes, vice chair. Second.
All right. Who's our, who's our chair?
Chair.
Leslie and Rhodes.
Okay. Leslie Shell is our chairperson and Gene Rhodes is vice chair.
Nobody at 6:00 PM, Mr. Chairman, on the-
We're, we're locking in our, we're doing-
6:00 PM on Mondays. All right.
First Monday.
First Monday. Okay. All right, let's do budget. Budget. I have Chris Taylor, Paul Goode, Justin Nipper, Danny Whit, Billy Comenden, Leslie Shell, and Jerry Foster.
All right, so nominations for chairman.
I think I understand.
Okay. Chris, second, all in, any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you need a vice chairman.
Jerry.
Is there?
Is that motion, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
All right, so budget, you have Chris Taylor as chair, Jerry Foster as vice chair. We'll now do 6 o'clock on Mondays. 6 o'clock on-
Second Monday.
Second Monday. 6 o'clock on second Monday. All right. Education, I have Ms. Echols, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Ring, Mr. Goode, Mr. Driver, Ms. Kruger, and Mr. Comenden.
All right, do we have nominations for chairman of education?
I'm gonna make a vote for Danny Sullivan, the chairman.
Okay, we've got any other, any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Chairman, you need a vice chairman. You get nominations for vice chair.
Second.
Any other nomination for vice chair? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
About 30.
All right, so we got, I'm sorry, so Mr. Danny Sullivan is chair and vice chair was,
was Baker Ring. Did y'all set a meeting time?
5:30.
First, first Monday at 5:30. Okay. Mr. Michelle, I would ask if y'all, if you see that you're gonna have a big agenda, maybe slide back to 5:00, so leave an hour before general ops starts. And we'll have to announce that a week before. Okay. All right, next up, we have financial management, oh no, financial management, we will pick the chair at the first meeting because we have a, it's a mixed committee of commissioners and elected officials.[1748.41]
Jerry Foster.
Okay, we got two nominations, Kruger and Foster. Any other nominations? Okay, we're going to vote first. All in favor of Kruger, raise your hand. All in favor of Foster, raise your hand.
1, 2.
Okay. We do not have an election. We'll open it back up for nominations again. Are there any other nominations from the floor? We're going to rehold the election. Is there another nomination? Nominations, again, we're starting over.
Is someone up here?
Mo did not, Mo did not decide, sir. We can do it at the first meeting.
We could.
Yeah, why can't we just fill the seat now?
We could, if you, we can try it one more time. Nominations?
Jerry Foster.
All right, we got Foster, nomination for Foster. Is there another nomination?
The Honorable Carolyn Kruger.
Okay, we have any other nominations? All right, all in favor of Foster, raise your hand. 1, 2, 3. All in favor of Kruger, raise your hand. 1, 2, 3. All right, deadlock again, all right.
I think we can continue with this, we definitely continue with Ms. Kruger until we, until we get an election.
Okay. All right. Highway will have to elect at their first meeting, our Road Superintendent's not here tonight, and so, and neither is the citizen, so we'll wait until Highway meets to elect a Chair. Committee on Committees is already elected. Beer Board, I have Mr. Becker, Ms. DeWitt, Ms. Echols, Mr. Goode, and Ms. Tucker.
We were referring, since we may not make trial of you, what is going to happen?
It's growing. All right, we got a most nomination for Mr. Becker, any other nominations?
Second.
Motion's nomination cease, and Mr. Becker will be elected by acclamation.
Someone.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, taking nominations for a vice chair.
Nomination, Tucker.
Someone.
Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health, Education, and Housing Facility Board, President is Jim Anderson, and Dr. Rodney Runyon, both six years' terms. It was discussed and unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Becker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health, Education, and Housing Facility Board, President is Jim Anderson, and Dr. Rodney Runyon, both six years' terms. It was discussed and unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Mo Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Civil Service Board, Sally Wade Brown is employee that has deferred, or this, I'm sorry, has not resigned, has resigned from that, and that was going to be deferred another month until the county makes a recommendation. That's information only, so to speak. And, let's see, on the Library Board, on your next page, you have a reappointment of Judge Jane Wheatcraft for the Board of Trustees, recommendation, and Mary Ann Mudd, another three-year term, Amy Eller, another three-year term. That had recommendations, also from the County Exec.
She's replaced by Donna McFarland.
Donna McFarland, I apologize, I had Amy coming off and Donna Farland going on. That was discussed and passed, it was unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Becker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to have this opportunity, point at privilege, to say, I'll just talk about the sheriff being in pink cars and pink outfits, I think it would look good. The rest of its announcements, it's on your, for next month, it's on your agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goode. Education, Mr. Goode.
That's officially Mr. Sullivan now.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan, I'm sorry. Highway Commission, Mr. Graves. Okay. General Ops, Michelle. Oh, Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry, we're going, you're going to do it during Budget? Okay. All right, I'm sorry, you told me that, Michelle. Emergency Services.
That was for.
Okay. Legislative, Mr. Ring.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have two items of business. Resolution 1909-01, adopting the contract for cooperative agreement between the Millersville Library and the City of Millersville, Tennessee, and I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Echols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And 1909-02, Electronic Monitoring Indigent Fund Agreement, and I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Echols. No one in the queue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Becker, Financial Management.
No.
Okay. Mr. Taylor.
We had a joint meeting with General Ops. JPA came and presented a pretty in-depth analysis of how we're going to move forward. What the presiding thought was that, because with the money that was coming in with the additional tax rate, the Sheriff's Department, due to the overcrowding, and it wasn't just any one particular population, it was a combination of female population, male population, and the juvenile male population, although we ship our juveniles to other counties, we have to keep our male juveniles, and female juveniles for that matter, that are going to be tried as adults. Right now, we have eight, they're an extremely hard group, and just in talking and working through some things, it seems like the best method is going to be to have a central control center, and then three pods coming off of that, so that's going to come along. And then also, there were discussions about how we begin the parking garage, and where that would start up. They also answered several questions and gave us a lot of presentations just about the general look of the building, some architectural sketches and other things. They're going to meet in October, because we couldn't get them here in time for this month. It passed both General Ops and Budget Committee, but we're, again, waiting until October to hold it, because that way we can make sure JP was here, JPA was here for the entire Commission. So that way, if anybody asks questions or any discussion, we can do it then, so that way everybody, they can also answer the questions if needed. Moving along with that, we've got a.
Anything else you would add?
That 1909-03, it's appropriating $2,500 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, matching funds to participate in the electronic monitoring agency fund program. This is the one from the state where we have to put up the money first, and then they'll match it, and this is what the judges have felt we might use, so I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nipper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
1909-04, appropriating $11,250 donation from the City of Millersville to be used for one additional part-time employee and program supplies for the library to manage the Millersville Community Center for Millersville Public Library. That's a lot of Millersvilles in there. What it is, is they're going to hire one part-time employee, and they're going to run through the library, the community center across the street, just makes things a little bit easier and cleaner, so that way everybody has one place to go to that's open more often than the community center. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Echols. Mr. Hinton.
If you hadn't complimented the people who caused that to happen, you'd need to do that if you have a chance, because Millersville has a great community center down there, but they have a little trouble keeping it operative. And we have a great library down there, and we're, they've outgrown the building that was built for them. So this is going to allow them to expand, the library will do the scheduling for the other building, and it's going to be a really, really, really good cooperative for that community. So it's a good deal.
Yeah, Mr. Hinton, I would echo that, you know, it's in my district, and, yeah, I was principal for Millersville Kids for a long time, and, you know, a lot of times people initially say, well, there's a library in Gillisville, there's a library in White House, but transportation, you know, some of our poorest citizens in Sumner County are right there, and they don't have access, and that community center and the library really serves a huge purpose in that community. I'm really, really thankful for the opportunity for it to have, you know, for that to happen. I appreciate, Mr. Hinton, your constant support over the years, not just for libraries, but especially for the city of Millersville, so thank you.
All right, no one else in the queue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, I guess, just to make sure that this 15 new school resource officers, this will be for every remaining school, but it does not account for the future, the Liberty Creek, but every remaining current school. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yes, sir. I support having school resource officers in our schools. I supported measures back in 2013 where we revamped the entrances and helped security, did security measures back then. I can't vote for this because of how we got there, and that's with the tax increase. We were told in the 2014 tax increase that we would address school resource officers in all schools.
Point of order, that is not what that said in that tax increase, sir.
This came from the county.
Sir, I was the one, I was on budget then, I'm telling you exactly what it was. We were paying for the school resource officers that approved about four months earlier by the Commission in Budget.
Mr. Chairman, you want to state his point?
He stated it. Go ahead. Finish, Mr. Taylor.
That was, that comes from then, whatever, but, and the reason I'm saying this is because this is tax increase money that, you know, we're taking out of the pockets of our property owners. And I just dove in and went through budgets for months, and there was other ways to do this. For one, one way, we increased the director's salary 57,000.
All right, you're out of order, Mr. Taylor. You can, if you want to speak to the motion, the revenue was approved last month, you can speak about student, school resource officers, anything about this motion of the appropriation, but.
I don't think I'm out of order in how we get to the funding source.
I think you are. You're out of order.
I call it a vision of assembly.
Okay. Let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, you clarify what we're voting on?
Yes, I ruled Mr. Taylor out of order regarding questioning, or discussing the revenue stream, questioning the director's salary, things like that. So if you vote yes, then you're voting to uphold Mr. Taylor, to allow him to continue what his line of conversation debate. If you vote, if you push the red button no, then you're upholding the Chairman's decision.
I got the division on the board.
Okay. Yes.
Division's on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote?
All right, Mr. Taylor, you're, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. Fails to carry. Mr. Taylor.
All right, can't talk about that then, right?
No.
Well, you know, that, 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 this makes me, I don't know what it makes me, but anyways, anyways, I support putting school resource officers in our schools. You know, I don't support how it's being done, don't support the prerequisite on what was told. We were told we were getting a grant to put school resource officers in all of our schools. We are getting a grant, but it doesn't cover about 40% of the true cost. So when you've got to go back into your communities and tell people that, you know, about the tax increases, that they're going to have to, they're going to start getting the bills next month, so let me just warn you. People don't even know they got a tax increase yet. There's a lot of them. Get ready, your phone's going to start ringing. So, so I'm not against this, but I'm not for it, so I'm going to be abstaining.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We are back to the, or, excuse me, we're on the motion, no one else in the queue. A yes vote is to approve $1.17 million for 15 new SROs and one new school resource sergeant.
Resolution's on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. Does anyone, anyone not voting, wish to vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? With 21 affirmative votes, it is approved on first and final reading.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir. 1909-07. Thank you. 1909-07, appropriating $72,309 from the 2018 Homeland Security Grant for the Emergency Management Agency. These are obviously monies that we receive when we go out and do like Swiftwater Rescue in other states and things like that, along with some of the different grants we've gotten, so I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Guthrie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Oh, okay. Mr. Mansfield.
Would you just mind changing my vote on 1909-05, just to be an abstention, please, for the record? Thank you.
Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn? Oh. Mr. DeWitt.
Can I make a quick announcement? If possible, could the nonprofit ad hoc committee meet just for a second, right after the meeting, right now?
Yes. Ad hoc, check ad hoc committee.
Nonprofit.[1589.85]